I'll call to order the January 5th, 2023 City of Maple Plain Planning Commission. We'll start with our collective allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we have our agenda in front of us. So does anyone have any changes, modifications to the agenda? I'd like to add maybe just a sub-part to number six would be elections for Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair. We can handle that under six, I believe, though. Any other modifications? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I approve.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next is the approval of the minutes for the December 1st meeting. I had a couple clerical issues in the Section 5 Public Hearing, third paragraph. Coulter stated that the topic was being brought back to B Planning Commission, probably should say the Planning Commission. And then the next sentence, Coulter shared that the A, probably delete the word "the" in that situation there, reads better. Any other thoughts or modifications to the minutes?
I thought there was some place where somebody's name, there was two capitals.
Yeah, it's at the end, and my name is matter of fact.
Okay, oh, yes.
In the final motion, just to miss, spelled correctly, just capitalization.
That was the only thing I saw.
Very good. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes?
I make a motion, we adopt the agenda.
The minutes, you mean?
Minutes, right.
Approve the minutes?
From December 1st.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to our, let me get back to the agenda here, I'm sorry, I'm not used to working with the computer at this meeting, our public hearing for Forest Fork. Mr. Coulter, would you like to take over?
Yes, thank you, Honorable Chair, Commissioners, Happy New Year. And we have on our agenda tonight is a request for site plan review and a conditional use permit to allow a change in use and renovation of a portion of the existing commercial building located at 5370 Highway 12. The applicant, Forest Fork, along with the owner of that property, Outcome Limited Partnership, are requesting that the city consider two items relating to the potential use of that facility and that site. One is site plan review to allow renovation and a change in use, or I look at it as an expansion and intensification of use of the existing commercial building to break up the warehouse portion of the building into smaller individual business spaces, and then a conditional use permit to allow heavy manufacturing, growing processing, and packaging of food products on the subject property. So, this property is located on the north side of Highway 12 and is currently zoned by the city as mixed-use Bud Avenue. So, the city, as most of you know, is broken down into three subzones. So, the MUB is the particular subzone, or mixed-use Bud Avenue is the subzone that this property falls into. It is guided by the Comprehensive Plan as mixed-use. Site's comprised of 13 acres overall, and there is an existing commercial building that's on the property. So, the building that exists today is approximately 135,000 square feet and has historically been used as kind of a single-user facility. There's an office on the front side or south side of that building that faces Highway 12, and then kind of warehouse manufacturing and storage as in the kind of the white part of the building, the larger part of the building. So with that, when we've talked to potential either buyers of this site or potential tenants for this property, we've noted that the way that that site was set up is as a kind of single-user facility. There's a parking lot, an office really associated with that south side that serves then the rest of that facility. And so if we were to break that facility into multiple tenant spaces or into individualized tenant spaces, we would need to recognize or understand site improvements that would allow for those spaces to function individually rather than as a part of the whole. So with that, the applicant is proposing to utilize the north, what I would call one-third of that site or that building, approximately 35,000 square feet of space, and convert that into a new manufacturing facility that would allow for the processing, the growing, and the packaging and distribution of specialized mushroom varieties. So, the applicant, Forest Fork, has a proprietary process system that they've developed for growing mushrooms within an enclosed facility utilizing a hanging or a racking system, I'll call it. And so they would like to move into that north one-third or that north 35,000 square feet in kind of a standalone space. They'd have small office, they'd have loading dock with doors there where they could receive or send out product, and then they would have facilities kind of all internal for the growth of the mushrooms, processing of the mushrooms, and then the associated materials. The applicant, and I put it in the packet, did provide kind of like, it's kind of an investor PowerPoint. I can put up any of the information, applicants here, if there's questions specifically on that process or how they're going to utilize that space. But essentially, the city does allow what we consider to be light industrial and manufacturing in the mixed-use Bud Avenue zoning district. We call it warehousing and light manufacturing with no outdoor storage. That's a permitted use. When we started talking about the actual production, food processing, and then just the size of the space and kind of operation that we're talking about, when we looked at how do we define anywhere within the city's ordinances, light versus heavy manufacturing, we have fairly specific definitions, although they don't address every single scenario. We felt, just given that we talk about larger-scale food processing in the heavy manufacturing, that this fit into that, given that there could be kind of byproducts of food processing that might fall into the heavy manufacturing. I don't know that that is the case with this particular user, but again, when we're looking at the conversion of the space, site plan approval, we were trying to match use with some of the definitions that we have. And so with that, we believe this falls into what would be considered heavy. And so a part of the request tonight is also consideration for conditional use permit, which our ordinance in the mixed-use zoning district gives the city, not the explicit ability, but opens the door for us to consider conditional uses that are similar to or that we find similar to or consistent with other uses, either within that district or uses that we think are acceptable within that zoning district. This building, we've had tons of conversation on, just for context, this building's been for sale for quite some time. Historically, the user in this facility, at least for the like recent history, has been a heavy manufacturer. They do plastics processing, which we consider to be heavy manufacturing, but there were no special permits or anything issued for that. And we don't necessarily believe that that use occurred in that building prior to the adoption of our current set of ordinances, which means it's just a use that's not really legal conforming, it's just a, there's probably gray areas to what that use is. But we do know that there's been plastics processing occurring in a portion of that facility for some time. We do also know that just directly to the north and then to the north and west, the land adjacent to this facility is commercial light industrial, which does allow heavy manufacturing as a conditional use as well. And we've also heard that there is significant value in this building. We've heard from the brokers, we've heard it from the owner. We have had some people come to council saying that there's quite a bit of value in this building, so the idea that this building could be, or this property could be sold and this building taken down is not as probable as somebody trying to utilize. And that's what we've seen a lot of people come forward to the city, talking to us about reusing or repurposing this building, and a lot of the potential uses are similar to either light or heavy manufacturing or some sort of storage warehousing manufacturing. And again, it's got to do with, you've got 137,000 square feet of building that was built specifically for that purpose. So, just a little bit of context in that, with the request in front of us tonight, we're considering as a conditional use permit, which I think we have the ability to do if the city wants to make a finding that the proposed use for food processing, large-scale food production falls into that kind of similar category, and then it would be done under a conditional use, which does protect the city a little bit from, you know, other potential users wanting to do similar types of things in the MU districts. So, with that, during the site plan review process, what we say is that we'll evaluate the effects of the proposed site plan, which is based upon but not limited to compliance with City Comprehensive Plan provisions of the chapter, which include the design guidelines and city engineering guidelines. That gives the city quite a bit of room to review a particular use. But I will note when we're talking about an existing facility and we're talking about really the renovation of a portion of the existing facility, we've had this conversation before with how the standards are maybe not wholly applicable. There's some balance between standard and kind of just reasonable renovations or improvements to the property and to the building itself. So with that, we looked at really the conversion of that 34,000 square feet on the north side of this building. We're looking at it somewhat independently of the rest of the facility, noting that a portion of the facility would not be changing under the proposed use. So, the office space in front and that kind of two bays to the south are really staying the same. They're still under the lease of the plastics company for now. At some point in the future, if those spaces were to come forward and be utilized in the exact same manner they are now, they could probably stay the way they are, but if they were to be broken down in any format which would, you know, start to individualize those, we'd probably be talking about additional site plan review required. We did pose that to the applicant as a potential, for them to look at kind of doing an overall holistic site plan, and at this point, they were interested just in this particular tenant space and making improvements that pertain to this particular tenant. So, with that, we asked the applicant to prepare a site plan which would essentially provide for the use of that space independent of the rest of the facility. So you can see, as you come into the facility off of Highway 12, there is a paved parking lot that's located on the south side of the building, and then that goes into a office space. And so there's kind of a front door, an entrance to the facility. It allows for, you know, kind of a public access and a public front on the front side of that building. So, by breaking this north space and that bay out, we were looking for, one, a designated access way to get back to that space that would allow for now public access essentially. When we're saying public, we're talking employees, deliveries, everything that goes along with kind of an individualized operation. And so, access to that space and then parking to provide for that space, and then some of the kind of things that go along with that, lighting, some landscaping associated with the site plan. As it relates to the building, I will be seeking direction from planning. The applicant is, or the building owner, I should say, is making some improvements to the building from a kind of maintenance level, things with roofing, and they are also painting, doing some painting, and then they're making some interior modifications to the space. The applicant's going to be making interior modifications to the individualized space that's there, once they are there, by looking at the plans that we have in the packet. I'll show those at a high level as we go through the presentation. So with that, we're looking at kind of site plan-related improvements to this site, and then really limited or no modifications to the building outside of some roofing and painting. They are proposing to install a new garage door to that north bay, and I'll show you where that is, so there's kind of one exterior modification to that. So, with that, we asked the applicant to prepare plans that would show how they would provide access to that area as well as parking spaces, and then we go through our kind of usual review relating to kind of site plan-related improvements. That includes site layout, stormwater drainage, grading, engineering-related, then lighting, landscaping, and then kind of miscellaneous accessory stuff that we look at. So, the applicant is proposing to come off of Highway 12 with a new, I think this best depicts, a new access driveway that would utilize the existing access driveway coming off Highway 12 up to the point of the existing parking lot. It is showing that that would be overlaid or paved or updated. And then that 25-foot-wide drive aisle would be extended to the north, all the way to the back side of this building, to a point where it would essentially terminate into a parking area. And so, they're proposing a new 25-foot by two-minute access aisle to provide access back to that spot, and then with that, at the end, a total of 44 parking spaces would be proposed. So with that, as it relates to the site plan, we did note a couple of things. They show the overhead, the existing kind of loading dock door that's located on the kind of the very north side. One of the things that we were looking for is more clarification on kind of the person door coming into the building, kind of the front entrance, if you will, and then also the garage door that they show in the plans. But looking at this, you know, general configuration, you know, they're looking for kind of perimeter parking up along the building, along the north property line, and then kind of a double-roll parking or internal bay of parking that would be paved with by two-minute pavement. So there was a little bit more information that we were asking for that relates to just kind of how they're going to access the building by, for just people general in and out, and then noting that we wanted to see that area kind of designated and not through a parking space or something similar.
Lamar, could you point out where the main loading dock area is supposed to be?
Yeah.
Is that that area right next to the ADA parking, or is it somewhere else?
Yeah, it's right, yeah, it's, there's a dock here. If we go to the...
That dock exists now?
Yeah, if we go to the architectural plan, there is a garage door that's here now, and then what I was looking for was this dock door here that's going to be installed.
That would be new?
That would be a new door.
And you were asking where there might be a person door?
Yeah, and then the person door coming into the facility, I believe, would come in somewhere in this location. If we go to, you can see here, they depict on the plan, you know, this is the existing door here, and then this is the location of that loading dock door. There are a couple of doors, if you look, there's one here, one here, one here, I think there's one here.
Mark, would you like me to provide any clarifications as we've had? I can comment on quite a few of the conversations I've had with Greg and so forth. I can count to forty on the clock, I'm sure.
Do you want me to finish first?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and finish your report here, and then we'll open up the public hearing.
Sure. So with that, the applicant is proposing, like I said, 44 parking spaces. They are 20 by nine, which does meet our standard. They're proposing access aisles, which are 25 feet, which also meets our standards. I have reached out to fire and haven't gotten a definitive feedback back on whether they are concerned about a certain fire apparatus being able to navigate that turn. We also asked for clarification and/or information relating to truck turning movements, showing how they can navigate that site with cars parked in those spaces, which is something that we'd want to confirm. It seems like some of the turning movements probably would eliminate some of the spaces. The good news is there is room there to add spaces, depending on how, you know, how far to the south you go or how far to the east you go, there is room on this site. One thing I will note in that overall site plan, you can see the applicant provided kind of an existing conditions, and they are proposing to remove certain portions of the gravel to be able to install the by-two-minute driveway. One of the things I noted is that there is going to remain on the property, this area here is going to remain as gravel, so that's not being removed. And then this gravel area here is also proposed to remain. We did ask for clarification. This area is not really used now by the existing tenant. There is an area that's used, you know, somewhere about like, about up to here by the existing tenant, up to those tanks. So that's something that we just noted, I wanted to point out to Planning Commission if there's any questions related to that. I also noted there's an existing trash compactor that services the kind of existing use of that building, and, you know, we just note that if trash is added to this potential, to this particular user at some point, for exterior, an exterior facility would need to be developed or built to meet our ordinance. Right now, our understanding is it's not planned. And then we made a couple other comments just on existing conditions. There was a note that we went back to the engineer about just asking about this existing shed, it says to be relocated. We were looking for clarification on that. As it relates to the proposed building and improvements, we did do some parking analysis. With this site, we noted there's 248 square feet of office, 17,000 square feet of manufacturing, warehousing, assembly, and 10 to 15 employees. The overall space is larger than that, but we did subtract out some of the processing, manufacturing space that's occupied by their equipment or clearly just storage space to try to come up with a reasonable number of parking spaces. Our ordinance says that you have one space per 250 square feet for office space, that requires one space then, with the 240 being proposed. And then we also note that we require parking for light manufacturing, warehousing, and assembly, based on one parking space for each two employees or one space for each 400 square feet of floor area, whichever is greater. So we applied both of those. The floor area calculation equates to more, so that's that greater. So you have one space office required, 43 spaces required of manufacturing warehouse, only eight spaces if you use the 10 to 15 employees, but that's today's count. It's not, you know, employees are just kind of one measure that we utilize. Given that, 44 surface parking spaces seems to be a reasonable and appropriate number for the proposed use of this facility. I noted the architectural guidelines, that currently the building doesn't meet architectural guidelines. The proposed kind of parcelization of this site doesn't, in and of itself, trigger architectural standards or guidelines, but I'd be looking for direction or any kind of discussion from Planning Commission related to that. Then the applicant did provide a lighting plan. Along with their site plan submittal, that lighting plan shows that the applicant would be adding a series of pole lights, so eight new mounted pole lights along the ingress/egress aisle, and then at the perimeter of the parking lot, those pole lights would comply with our applicable standard. We have some maximum foot handle requirements that also apply, and they show that they would be meeting kind of the lighting criteria relating to the proposed site. And then kind of my final comments on the site relating to landscaping, we do have some landscape requirements. Essentially, we say that 10% of the perimeter of private parking and driveway areas, having over 40 stalls shall be landscaped. Well, in this particular case, everything to the east of the proposed drive aisle and everything to the north is going to be maintained as green space, so when you do that calculation, you would easily exceed that 10% requirement. But we do say that that area should be landscaped, and so it's either, you know, sodded, ground cover, flowers, shrubbery, or trees. And so with that, we suggested that the applicant look to apply some standard that's reasonable for the inclusion of deciduous evergreen trees, shrubs, ornamental plants along the perimeter with a emphasis or focus on the Highway 12 entrance. And so, the applicant did provide a landscape plan, which does provide some new, the introduction of new landscape materials, so two kind of ornamental beds along with some deciduous trees on both the east and west side, well, deciduous on the east and evergreen on the west, as well as a new deciduous tree kind of along the parking next to the office space there, so what's depicted. And then as you go back to the building side, this is the, sorry, they show four deciduous trees along with a shrub hedge along the north border of that parking lot, just the introduction of some kind of canopy cover and new vegetation with that. So, that's a proposed landscape plan. Any feedback or comments, we'd be happy to know. And then we did get updated stormwater management as well as grading and drainage plans from the applicant. Our engineer did have an opportunity to review those at the beginning of this week and provided me with some general comments, but said overall, they looked like they would comply with applicable standards. There were some comments and suggestions that they need to make a couple revisions to their stormwater management plan, their SWIP plan for this site, but otherwise looked like this particular improvement does not trigger stormwater detention or stormwater treatment facilities, because it would be under the one-acre threshold that would be, that would automatically make that trigger point. I will note that, and we noted this to the applicant, that if this particular piece comes in and it's close to that one acre, and then in the future they add-on, quote unquote "add-on", we would view that as kind of a, we would view it as one project, not a new project, and it would most likely trigger stormwater management requirements, which then would require stormwater management. So, we're noting that, if there's questions about that, if you have, happy to answer any of those. So with that, city has criteria for granting conditional use permits as well as for reviewing site plan. I noted if there was consideration... I noted if there was consideration for granting approval or recommending approval, there were some conditions that we think should just be specific enough to the food processing that they're proposing. That would be, that would kind of confine this to just this site. One of those being that there's an existing building that can accommodate that. And then we also noted that it, it would be beneficial ultimately for the city to look at the kind of ultimate development of this property, not knowing exactly how those bays would break down in the future. It would be good to look at kind of a ghost plan or something that would show how this particular access aisle coming in and this driveway could serve additional bays if they were to be broken down, noting that there's a hundred and thirty-seven thousand square feet. And it seems more likely that you're going to see these kind of thirty thousand or even smaller tenants looking for that type of space. So with that, that would break that building down into three to four bays potentially, if you looked at this being applied across the whole board. But so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, go into more detail or provide any other information.
A couple of quick questions. One is, just curious, I probably missed it, but what's the ownership structure? Are you, are they tenants that are moving in? Okay.
Yeah, as we understand it, this is a tenant, the force fork would be a tenant in this space.
Okay. And so the other portions of the building are actively looking for new tenants? So we could have one, two, three more tenants?
Yeah, I mean, we noted that there's an existing tenant, but we know that they're moving, right? They've already come through us for a site plan for a different site. So, yeah, we anticipate we'd be talking about.
I guess my only question or my comment is just to make sure that we're leaving enough room for those other uses. Ie, is it twenty-five foot, whatever, there's, that, you know, potentially parking certainly, you know. And I know people a heck of a lot smarter than me are looking at this with the engineering of it. But I guess the question statement is just really making sure that we're leaving enough room for those other portions of the building. Two-thirds of what's there.
Forty-four is great now, but if it expands, then what happens?
So what, the way that we're looking at it is they're breaking off, you know, the, the piece of the building, this thirty-four thousand square feet as an individual tenant space. The rest of the building is maintained as a single tenant facility. So if they come back in the future and want to break that down more, we would look at having, they would have to come back through site plan. We did talk and, you know, we offered to the applicant, or to the owner, different than the applicant. We offered the ability for them to do kind of a master plan that we could review and approve that would allow that. And they chose to just look at and focus on this space. So I would anticipate any changes to either this tenant space if they were to expand or if we were to see another user come forward wanting to utilize a piece of this space that we would, we would be talking about a similar process. Now, with that said, if somebody came in and said, hey, we're going to take the rest of the building as is and just do light manufacturing, that's something that potentially could be done in that space if they don't change how that's being done now, so.
Okay, then just with that, just my, maybe my imagination run a little bit. We get another user on the other two or two-thirds of the property and their requirements are sixty parking.
Yeah.
I would assume we've got a cross easement between the two or we're going to work together? Or what does that parking field start to look like there?
I think.
Maybe it's not even an issue.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I mean, one, the, the site has thirteen acres. Now, they're talking that ultimately they'd like to split off a piece of this. They'd like to split off kind of the, the green piece to the, to the east. So if we go back to the aerial, kind of just look at this site. I mean, a couple of things we note in this site is there is a, there is, you know, some ability that, oh, wow, that's way too big, sir.
Gets your point across.
Yeah, yeah. Something, you know, that could be split like this or something like that. And then the, the green area, all of this here, you know, could be a new use. It's the biggest vacant piece of park, of land, kind of greenfield we have in the city. So, so I, I think there's definitely potential that we could see that. We've had lots of conversations about how that property gets used in the future, noting that M U B is really a district where the city wants to see kind of redevelopment and mixed use, multifamily, commercial, retail. I mean, we show even big box type stuff in some of the, the planning documents that we've had. So kind of understanding that, if you look at that, that at some point would be broken off. I do, I do think there's a scenario, if you just look at the improvements that they're making for this, where this parking lot essentially, you know, would just expand down however you do it, you know, in a similar manner in here, right? So if you kind of just expand that, that parking lot down, you could see you could add quite a few spaces, you know, pretty easily to support additional bays. And maybe they're connected, maybe they're standalone. I think it is kind of dependent on how many bays. I will tell you, I mean, in the industry with these large commercial buildings, we're seeing them broken down a ton right now. I mean, there's, there's a lot of momentum out there to break these spaces down into kind of more manageable spaces.
And right now, there's one access point into the facility off of twelve.
Correct.
That's the spot.
That's it.
So, okay, so obviously if you get into doing anything on that additional piece, I mean, we're looking at highway traffic study. We're, that's a lot without any turn lanes there, but that's way down.
If we're doing, if we're doing something bigger, I do think then, you know, because it's one ownership now, something in the future, if this were to develop, I do think you're going to be looking at, whether it's in the same location or not, you're going to be looking at a single spine that then serves, you know, this property and that property. But that's a shared drive coming in.
Mark, typically CUPs are attached to, to a property, not to a part of a building. Can you explain kind of how you were proposing the CUP to apply to just this particular tenant? Is there, is there some sort of clear definition of, of where that is? And I don't, I don't think I really saw it on the plans. Or does it apply to the entire site?
No, our intent would be to write the CUP condition so it's applicable to the site plan and building improvements that are shown. So we would essentially create the exhibit to show that. And that's, that's where you could do the food processing. Sorry, I'm trying to get to the architectural. So, you know, something where, is this it? Well, this shows kind of some, how those bays are broken down internally. But we would create an exhibit, oh, this one, that relates to this site plan here and, and then lays this over the building square, the, the building space to say, this is the portion of the building that is, can be utilized for that.
You would clearly define that inside.
Yeah, and we can do that in the, in the CUP. And I, I mean, we, you know, we do that with use a lot. Like we say that this, this one accessory building can be used for that use on the site. So even though the site, it's memorialized, it doesn't necessarily, it's not applicable that you can just keep expanding that or changing that.
So this permit would only be for that particular area, would not be for the rest of the two-thirds or three-quarters of the building?
Correct.
That's not a part of this tenant?
Correct.
Okay.
What would happen if they would want to expand?
It's an amendment to the CUP. And again, it just goes back to we're looking at it, you know, only for this purpose. And this is, this is somewhat unique because we're talking about a building that was set up for one tenant. Now they're asking to do multi and then expand that use. And so with that, you know, we're trying to make sure that all the space is adequately provided for in terms of parking, lighting, you know, our standards. If you were to go into, say, like an existing industrial building that's already set up with a full parking lot and it, you know, that parking lot was set up to serve the entire building for commercial and office and everything, then, and, and the use is permitted, right? Then you can, you can go in and do that. But this is not that case, right? This is.
Wouldn't be interesting to see, as you mentioned, a ghost plan to kind of show, conceptually at least, how it might change in the future if there were additional changes to the tenants or, you know, changes to the space. Even how they might utilize the, the area to the east, how, how would drive, the existing drive they're showing now, how that would work with new tenants or new buildings on the east side.
Well, at this point, I'll open up the public hearing at, what is it, six forty-two? Sir, if you'd like to add any additional comments, now would be a good time to do so. Go ahead and state your name and your association here and thank you for coming.
Yeah, hello, I'm Dana Anderson and I'm CEO at Forest Fork. We're a new operation growing mushrooms in Minneapolis today. The company itself has been around for about ten years. We purchased it during COVID and are adding some technology. We are looking at this facility as our indoor growing operation and also manufacturing grow bags that would be sold to third parties as well as fruiting them within the facility. We don't have any immediate plans for packaging within the facility. And primarily, you know, with, with indoor agriculture, it seems the IBC has looked at this, the International Building Code, and the codes have struggled. Cities have struggled, not just here, but everywhere, how to incorporate local food systems more embracing. Because it's a critical part of everybody's plan because it's a green movement to make your food and grow it more locally. And so I just would like to share that that's something, if you struggle a little bit with it. I don't know that it's, you know, agriculture is heavy manufacturing and we're bringing in some processed products and so on. In the, in the Journal of, of Food Agriculture, there is an article that speaks directly to that, that again, the codes just don't have that in there very well today. And so the International Building Code looks to be updating their recommendations to cities such as Maple Plain on how to embrace indoor farming. And so if I can just pause for a second, ask one question. Barb Rose, you're not related to Axel Rose, are you? With the glasses, no, okay. So that's my only comment. You know, we, we look forward to Maple Plain and we did a large search for our site. This is, you know, near where we want to be in terms of reaching the, the larger metropolitan area, in terms of accessing the rural community for our raw products, pelletized sawdust and, and soy hauls and so on that we utilize in our growing. And we're looking forward to, to being a part of this community. So with that, I'll just ask if there's any questions.
One question I have for you, Dana, is what do you foresee in terms of truck traffic in and out for this type of facility? How big are trucks, how often?
So we, we ourselves probably will be bringing in a few trucks per day. And then any other, when I ran a sixty thousand square foot indoor growing operation in Fairbault, we probably had three to five trucks per day and that would be similar. You know, this is a little smaller site as compared to that one.
What size trucks?
Occasional, maybe one to two full, full-size semi, but mostly box trucks and vans. Plus we have twenty, you know, the intention is for up to twenty employees. Yeah, it's a, it's an interesting spot for traffic. Have you dealt with that and thought about that too? Is that?
You have been thinking about it. And I do have some, some questions about the turning movements that you would have on the site here. I, I can't imagine driving in a semi-truck and going through that small, relatively small parking lot, turning, backing in and, and, you know, trying to negotiate to avoid cars and so forth. I'm not sure I'm satisfied with kind of how that, that layout is.
Yeah.
Do you, have you thought yourself further about circulation patterns and turning ratios and so forth?
Yeah, I think, again, it comes down to who we're servicing. We, in my previous venture, we did service Walmart and that did bring in the, the big semis. Now I understand, because I'm thankful that Mark went a little further, that the requirement is for forty-four parking spots. I wanted the islands of cars removed because, yeah, because we do need access to that garage door. And until this, so I had a perfect plan in this, so it was good that you kept going, Mark, as to how, how, how to, how to deal with it. We don't need this loading dock especially to start and we're not servicing Walmart on day one. So we'll need to figure out how we're going to put a loading dock on this facility or get access to a loading dock on this facility. That allows semis to, to get and navigate. It, it might be that that parking lot needs to be expanded so that we can get the, the cars on the, on the outer rim, out a hundred, hundred and five feet or so, so a semi can make those turns or cut off a few parking stalls. So I don't know how many excess spaces we have, but I'm bet, I'm betting there's a way to get it in there, one way or the other. But I wasn't consulted on, on this by the, the, by the building owner. And when I saw it, I asked him to remove it and now I found out why they didn't remove it. So, so I'm a little lost for words.
Sure.
But I think we, I think we can find a solution.
Just for clarification, Dana, are you saying on this that you're not proposing that loading dock door to start?
We are not proposing the loading dock door to start. It, it was part of our original plans, but the reality is, is that our first order of business is to build our block business, which isn't even, even the fruiting portion of this. And so we'd like to get producing, you know, a couple thousand blocks per day and we sell those to other indoor growing operations throughout the country. And we already have, you know, a good number of those sold and we're producing them now on a small scale, but we're looking to expand that operation here. And that's not even growing and it's not even agriculture. We're just filling bags with sterilized substrate. And so I'm not sure that even would fall into agriculture, we're just filling bags. So that probably meets the definition of the buildings and.
So that product, that, the product you're using to fill the bags, that's being imported into the facility? Are you doing, you're mixing in the facility, I would assume, and then filling those bags and then the truck takes it out?
Yep, sterilizing, adding water to basically soy hauls and sawdust and gypsum and a few other small elements that we put in there. And we fill about a ten-pound bag and, and add a little mycelium to that bag.
Is all of that product then stored within the building or outside the building? In hoppers or how is that?
Yeah, they're, they're kept, they're kept on rolling racks.
Okay.
Yep, and then the rolling racks, actually for about two to four weeks. And then they're removed and put into Gaylord's and then they're pelletized and shipped.
I mean, it's a really interesting business you're in, cutting edge, you know? There's going to be a lot, there's a lot of science going into all this, how we produce food with just water, without soils and all the crazy stuff out there. Are you on the operational side? Are you on the equity ownership side or?
Yeah, the founder and CEO.
You're the founder and CEO, okay.
And we have twelve investors.
Okay, alright. What do you think the initial investment into this facility is going to be for you guys?
This is a two million dollar project.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're in for keeps, this isn't an experiment?
No, this is, yeah.
This is going big time for you.
Yeah, this will be the largest specialty mushroom farm in the Midwest. So of its type, there's two mushroom farms that are larger, but of this type, it'll be the largest in the Midwest.
And I assume this is of the legal variety?
All legal.
Nothing hidden.
I've been doing indoor farming, the, the joke before was always about marijuana, now it's about psychedelics.
You know, I think with the movement of this and, and across the country on food production and doing it in a, in a, in a good way, green or different newer ways.
Yeah.
You know, I, when we get to the point of, of obviously with your conditional use, wanting to get a third of the building, I mean, obviously expansion is going to be if, and it sounds like you know what you're doing.
Right.
Expansion's going to be knocking within a year or two. Things kind of going on with earlier question on how do we deal with that? I mean, I don't, you know, you wouldn't be here if you weren't hoping to grow.
Right.
More than mushrooms, right?
That's right, yeah, we'd like to. That's right, yeah, we'd like to take up the whole building.
And so with that, you'd like to take the whole?
We're putting that in our closet, we can buy it, so.
But actually, you said just one loading dock is all you need, but the plan that, or the graphic that we saw for a second new one is, it'd be something that would be?
That, we will come back to you on that, because the first order of business is in, is to get the block business built, and we can get that going quickly, and then we'll come back to you on that.
But we'd like to know kind of, you know, your full plan, so you don't have to come back here again too frequently, and get you set up with, you know, permit according to how you foresee your business developing in the future. So ultimately, maybe sooner than later, a second loading dock would be something that you're planning for, as shown on the plan here, or?
Yeah, no, I think that's right. And, but, you know, just the number of parking stalls is new information, so I haven't processed it yet, yep. And, and so I think the concerns are, that you both have addressed, is legitimate, and I don't have a good answer on my feet. But we'll get one. You know, one option could be just to move that, like I said, move that X over to the other side of the wall, and then maybe we grab, grab, you know, a few hundred square feet from the other space, and we add it there, which is potential way to do it.
Yeah, I mean, I do think there's a, I mean, it's a fairly simple solution. I guess we wanted to just kind of understand it, so what we were proving. But I mean, when I looked at this, if that X is, you know, somewhere in this neighborhood, which I think it is somewhere in there. I mean, it would simply be that, you know, you'd have to take that out. And I do think if we start to show turning movement for a semi, you know, somehow that you're gonna, you're gonna end up losing some of these. But with that said, I do think you could, you know,
Yeah.
do something like this along that drive aisle, and then that opens that up, right? So I think there's easy solutions, because we have land to deal with, it's just getting it put together, but.
I guess my concern or reservation is that I see, just by the drawing you just made there, the sketch you made over the parking lot, it looks like it would probably need to be a fairly major redesign of the parking lot. Not only, you know, turning radius could go in, but, you know, a place to back up, you know, a turnout area to back up.
Yeah.
Personally, I'm not ready to sort of sign off on the site plan, knowing that I think the?
So I should start with this, that the, there's two elements. I mean, we have a, I guess, sort of a business that doesn't really require the conditional use permit. That's the block business, if we're filling bags and not growing anything per se. It's the fruiting rooms that would be classified as indoor agriculture, where the filling the bags really isn't making those. And that's our initial intent, and so there won't be any semis coming in initially. And the, it'll only be box trucks, and they'll be mostly ours.
One thing Cher mentioned earlier though, and just want to share with you, it's going to be important to understand, because you start undoing parking lots and redoing them, because now you're going to do, it gets expensive. You know, the drawing that you just drew on that route for that truck, with the door on that end of the building, you're almost going to have to come in on the driveway, get to the left side so you can go up and then back into that spot. But somebody will figure that out. But I think at the end of the day, that solves it for one truck. If you get a couple in the queue, even if it happens once a week, the driveway, you know, those are the things that I think really good people that study and design and go in through those simulations can figure out really easily.
Yeah.
But I think the location on those loading dock doors are going to be critical. Part of that critical is, is are you loading up into a truck? Or are you going to want to drop those trucks into those loading docks? That's a whole nother.
The initial plan is to purchase an electric lift gate.
Lift or something?
So we can put everything on there with an electric pallet or forklift, and then it goes up, and then you drop them into the truck. So that's why the drive-in is going to work just fine for our initial needs. And then we're not doing any food processing in the facility anytime soon. We have a packaging facility in Minneapolis. So if we do any slicing, we have our food safety plan over there that, here we just have a harvesting indoor agricultural license, there we have our package room license, so that's not coming here.
So today, are you looking for a conditional use permit for the cubes only?
If we're put out three months or this continues, yeah, we're going, I mean, we can't, we've been wanting to build this project, we have our equipment here already, and we've been waiting. And we have an incentive program through the state. And so every month for us that we wait is a hundred thousand of lost income every month. And then on top of that, we're burning money right now, and so, because we have extra staff and engineers. So for us, it's very, very expensive and waiting is critical.
I like the idea, it makes sense. I think it's the site plan that we're, I like the business, like that. But it's, you know, helping you to discover what that site plan is.
Yeah, so if it was, if that's going to get us started, I think, I think that would be what we'd ask for before we do the growing.
I want to take a look at a site plan, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just need to clarify one thing on your application, Dana, because we have, in conjunction with the planning application, we have the Minnesota Investment Fund application that we're trying to do sort of in concert with this. And we were tying the planning application approval to that MIF application approval and trying to get those in line. Now, that MIF application is for, that concept is for your entire business model though, right? Not just the cubing.
We've never discussed breaking it up. Yeah, that's true.
So, okay, and so from that standpoint, then, that application, if we're not, if we're not doing the full approval, then we would likely then have to postpone that, that application until this gets approved. So just to clarify that that's?
I understand, I'm just sharing my own concerns. We didn't need one conditional use permit in Fairbault, and we didn't need one in Minneapolis. And I don't know any other farmer that had to go through these steps. And so I want to share that with you, that it's very, very unusual that this sort of putting us in the middle of the bigger plans. I understand trying to get the parking right, and it's a valid point. But past that, there really isn't a whole lot that concerns us with getting our business operation going. And so I do think the conditional use permit should have a different path, maybe than to some of the other elements for this building.
Just quick comment to planning, we did talk about, you know, our ordinances are not set up for this. I mean, this is a new, kind of a new industry, new business, right? So it's not contemplated, so our ordinances don't speak to it in the light manufacturing realm, we don't speak to it in the heavy.
It's agriculture though, it's not, it's not heavy manufacturing, it's agriculture.
Right, but we don't speak to that either, we don't permit agriculture in the industrial district. So, I mean, so in general, I mean, we just haven't addressed it. We did talk about the possibility of amending the ordinance, right? And then coming up with a category that this actually fits into, I still think that's a possibility. That pathway is just a little bit longer, so we were trying to shorten this and say, what's the fastest way we can get to a kind of potential approval? And that was to go through the conditional use rather than trying to really study that ordinance and then come up with, you know, that takes several meetings typically, and it's just a little bit different process. But I think it is something that could be on our radar, so.
You've got, you know, two separate items here, one is the site plan review, the other is the conditional use permit. Do they have to be tied together at the same time?
No, they don't, I mean, they're, you know, it's two applications that are being made. We always run them concurrently so that we can consider them concurrently. In this case, what I'm hearing from planning though is the site plan is what is actually maybe the bigger of the issue, not the conditional use.
I'd like to hear from others, but in terms, in my, my point of view is, yeah, the site, the site plan is premature. I don't think it's really realistic. I support the, the operation, and I support the, you know, the conditional use permit to allow this type of business as heavy manufacturing. Yes, it's not, not really heavy manufacturing, but it has to fit into one of our categories.
Right.
I don't have any problem at all with that categorization, it's just the site plan that I think needs further, further evaluation. I think it's premature for us to evaluate, since I think it has to change, will have to change.
Substantially.
Yeah, fairly substantially, even though your, your more immediate operation may not include semi-trucks. You know, in the midterm, that could be months or even a couple of years from now, I think we want to consider a plan that, that does, that does factor that in, so you're not having to come back and modify your, or go through another site plan review in the future. And I think as far as, you know, your own business procedures as well too, you're going to want a plan that, that works well, right? You're not going to want to have a conflict out there with cars and trucks and people getting into the building.
We don't need forty-four parking spots, but that's what the code says we have to have, so that's what complicates it.
You've got lots of space, so I think, I think, as we all mentioned, there's plenty of opportunity.
Yeah, can we park on, can parking be on gravel so that we don't exceed the mid?
Not, not for your use, the existing users can continue to use the gravel that's been there. But once your space becomes your space, and now that's a hard line, then
I see.
it's new, so.
Yeah.
But, but I, to Seven's point, I don't see it as a, I see it as kind of, it needs to go back, get revised by the engineer, and then kind of take into account some of these comments, and if there's other comments, and then come back with kind of that, that plan. I do think there, you know, the forty-four spaces is what's recommended. If it was forty or something, I mean, we'd be in the ballpark, I think, on what that facility. But I did discount quite a bit of the space in there. And if you started to reconfigure internally, now all of a sudden, you could have more, right? Needs, so I just think that, you know, that forty-four seemed like a pretty solid estimate of what that space could realize, whether it's you or another user that wants to utilize that, so.
Got it. So, yeah, it's a learning, learning process for me too, and we learn together. And like I said, it's not unusual for this, you know, that's why I opened up with that, so. There's a little bit of a struggle within our agriculture, but bottom line, I think it just comes down to the parking spaces. I just don't know, I wanted to add one other thing, the employee entrance will be on the northeast corner of the building, so around that backside.
Oh, it's going around the backside?
Yeah.
I was just going to actually mention that, because you had kind of mentioned it in passing when we chatted, I think. And so I was wondering if there wasn't a way to just pave a little bit more on that north side.
We would have to create a sidewalk.
Yeah, we'll add a sidewalk there.
Yeah, but if you, you've got some space up there, I mean, you could do a little bit more parking up that direction.
That's the cleanest for everything, I think.
Okay, hold on, I'm going to go to that. So you're talking about you would be utilizing this person door for that?
And then I did tell that to Craig, that to add a sidewalk there, exactly.
So we'd have to, we'd have to show that at sidewalk, and then we'd have to carve out, there is parking shown right now in that area, which again, was why I was just asking for some of those.
Yep, and he, it looked like it was blacked out, I don't know what that blacked out space is.
It's a, yeah, it's an accessible handicap space, so, which unfortunately doesn't work perfectly because handicap accessibility, they can use any part of that hatched area to park. They don't have to park in the space, depending on how their vehicle loads or unload, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so you'd need a path from those stalls to the front door.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was a question I had as well too, is where the door would be, because that would determine where accessible parking would need to be.
Yep, and then how many, how close to one acre are we? Is that on that plan?
It's in the, it's in the SWIP. Let me see if I can pull it out.
It's extending out beside that.
You understand you're getting close, right?
Yeah, if we, like you said, that, exactly where you drew is exactly where we should add if there's extra potentials.
It's in one of these schedules, I just said, oh, I could look, but, I mean, I think that's something we could look at in a revised plan.
Yeah. And the parking space depth, is that exactly to the code limit, or is that a little short? I'm just trying to have a conversation with Craig afterwards on how to make sure that we can get all the parking spots in there that you're asking.
Yeah.
And still provide the accessibility, because ultimately it has to come from this engineer.
The twenty feet up against the building is mandated, and the twenty feet when they're head to head is that, but the ones that are up against the edges could go down to eighteen or eighteen and a half. We've allowed a reduction because of the overhang then potential outside of that. So there is some wiggle room in those spaces, those perimeter spaces, that are not, that are not up against the building.
Okay.
So.
Perfect.
Is the parking lot designed to be curved?
It's not proposed, and our ordinance does not stipulate curbing, so we don't require all, our paved areas to be curved. So it would be by, just by two minutes, and it would have kind of a direct sheet flow runoff.
Okay, and you said the engineer did not see the need for any kind of?
They're close on their threshold, but his comments to me this week, just this week, because he was able to review some updated information that came in last week, was that this plan does not trigger stormwater.
And that's why there was some pounding on the site?
It's part of the other reason why you're only seeing this, not the whole kind of master plan, is because that then requires a whole nother level of engineering, and they're not, at this point, ready to do that.
Other comments, questions?
So I think just in closing, I think we do need to end up then with the parking lot, if I'm understanding configured right. And then having the plan be the full conditional use permit, we're not coming back. That's what I'm leaving with, so to redesign the parking lot. But past that, is there anything else you need from me?
Any other comments on any of the things I've noted, building architecture, landscaping?
It seems like the way this is, is there, exterior, as that building evolves, there's going to be more and more discussion about exterior, more lighting, or how it all works together.
But again, he's not the owner of the building. So that'd be dealt with that person, right?
Right.
Right, so that's, right, I'm just trying to deal with things directly related to our operation, our entrance, our parking.
We're really not looking at anything on the exterior of this building.
Correct.
Maybe a little bit of roofing, I would just say.
Yeah, I mean, roofing and painting, right? So they've done some, they've done some painting.
They've already painted the entire visual side to the highway. And then they're in the process now, they've torn off the roof, or fifty percent of the roof is already being replaced as we speak.
And that was one of our comments, you know, there's multiple ways to, to address and kind of mitigate architecture in buildings, right? One is buildings, you know, hard stuff, one is soft stuff, right? And so we had asked for really some kind of focus, focal point at the entrance to kind of help, kind of just beautify the Highway 12 frontage, noting that by the time you get visibility way back here, there's really a small window where you see that space, and you're not seeing it up close. So it does, it does tend to then be a little bit different in terms of perception from if we were doing something that's like right on the highway, you know? Or something that the public really had a very easy.
But there would be signage that he would have to put some kind of sign up, right? To indicate that he's?
There's no signage proposed initially, but, yeah, ultimately, right. We asked for a sign plan, nothing, nothing was proposed.
It wouldn't be a, a covered stern sign or whatever they have on there.
I think that, you know, I think the, like, Stefan was saying, the usage, I think, you know, I think it's personally more comments and stuff out there, but I think it's, it's awesome.
Yeah, thank you, Mike.
But I think that the, um, just need to really work on that site plan. Otherwise, you know, we're looking at it also from the standpoint, we don't want to have to start policing this.
Yeah.
Right? All of a sudden it's like, yeah, I get that, but you know, gee, you know.
Yeah.
Now what? Now we're up to nineteen trucks a day. Well, you know, what, I'm not saying that would be what it would be, but if it was, we're on a highway.
Yeah.
The study on that is a nightmare, right?
Yeah.
And if we're looking at turn lanes or whatever that would be into that site.
Right.
You've got controlled, controls to the west of it.
Yeah.
Right? And, um, got a couple of tricky corners with the library and some other things.
Right.
In that area. And we start getting one, two semi sort of queued up trying to get in or out or whatever. Those are things I'm trying to avoid.
Yeah.
From our standpoint, but I'm trying to avoid it for you.
Yep. Yeah, it, it just isn't a heavy, it just isn't that, that, that sort of business that requires that many trucks in and out. Um.
Well, in terms of the landscape, uh, plan, I think it's very reasonable to do what you did here in terms of, uh, some plantings out by Highway twelve. It's more visible. Uh, some screening around the parking lot. Uh, my only change I probably would recommend is that there'd be maybe more plantings on the east side. To the north, we've got a storage facility. No one's really going to see that, you know, from that direction. Um, and that's not going anywhere. That's going to be there for a while. To the east, there is apartments and there's a proposal. I'm not sure where it's at now, but for additional apartments just to the southeast a little bit as well too. So I, I prefer to see more landscaping on the east side rather than on the north side.
Okay.
I was gonna say the same thing, like those trees to kind of
Wrap around.
spread those down the east side more than.
Yeah. Especially given that the access two is going to be up there.
Yeah.
It seems like you could, yeah, take these, these trees and start to do something coming down in front of that space. Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, yeah.
And, and same with this landscape.
Yeah, right. The screening needs to happen more on the east side than in the north.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, architecturally, how do we feel about painting a new roof? It's kind of a, you know, existing site. We're not really modifying anything on the outside except for.
Well, it sounds like, yeah, the building's not going to go anywhere and I don't, we're not, it's not needing to conform to the design guidelines. Is that's correct?
Yeah. Our guidelines are there. They're applicable. You guys, as a planning commissioner and city council, ultimately, we're saying that buildings, even renovation, conform. There, we've applied that though in what I call kind of a reasonable format, right? We don't say exactly how these buildings have to come up to full code. Now, in our industrial district, we actually do. We talk about a percentage of modification to the building, then the whole building. And site has to be brought up. With our design guidelines, they're a little more, um, organic and gray. They, they're, so you can apply them. In past situations, new construction, we've applied them almost, you know, entirely. Um, modifications, we've tried to be reasonable to say, you know, this is a public facing site, or this is where you're really making the improvements, is where we'd get the most benefit and then be the most compliant. Question would be for planning, ultimately council, does this, you know, does this building, if we put something on it, you know, stick me on or a, does it, is it necessary? Does it help? Does it better meet the intent or is it not necessary? And that's where, you know, we'd look for guidance or direction.
Yeah, I don't know. Cause what, because where the back corner is kind of tucked back, um, you know, if those apartments get built, they would kind of look
Look at it.
look at it. But there, you know, came to us what the, the building as is, it's, you know, if, I think if the whole building was being reconfigured, it's a little different conversation than a third of it. But, and new paint and stuff, it is going to look nicer than what it is today. So I don't know what others' opinions are on architectural design.
It's nice the way the building is orientated, narrow and the highway kind of
Yeah.
just runs back and just with some simple.
I think it'll help a lot to have paving.
Yeah.
Part of the reason it looks, you know, the way it does is the gravel.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it'll help.
Um, and you mentioned earlier, any outside storage would be
No, no outside storage for this particular user.
Palates, yada, 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 whatever.
Right. I mean, then we're clear on outdoor storage, right? So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we have two things, right? The conditional use permit, we need to
Right. Yeah, the, the reality, I think, of tonight, just based on what I've heard, and you guys are certainly capable of doing it however you want. Um, but it seems like it would be, this item would be tabled to our next meeting, including a conditional use. It seems like conditional use, there's no issues, but there's really no advantage to doing a conditional use permit without a site plan approval, um, because it doesn't allow you use differently. So if that's the case, um, but.
Okay. If that's your recommendation, that makes sense. And I'm not sure how it affects, you know, your funding.
Yeah, there are some timing things that we're going to have to talk to Dana Ball and figure out how we can do it to the best of our ability. But yeah.
I agree. I, I think it's something that we want to do.
Yeah.
Um, I want to do. It's, it's, but it's that, the site plan just needs a lot of work.
Yeah.
It's hard for us to move that down the process
Yeah.
the way it is today.
If it was a minor tweak here and there, we could note that and trust that it would happen, you know, as you worked with the city, city staff and so forth. But I, for me, it looks like it's going to have to be a fairly major redesign to make it work with trucks and parking. And I understand, and parking, forty stalls came, you know, late in the game for you and it was not necessarily, uh, something you were a part of. Uh, uh, so, yeah. I, I think it's something that requires a little more back to the drawing board.
Yeah, I think so. And, you know, I, I am confident that that can be resolved and a plan submitted, again, affecting our operation. I guess I would just ask, you know, that the council appreciate our need to get our operations up and running.
Certainly.
And that if we are tabling to the next meeting, that, uh,
Very much so.
that, that if there are continued things with watershed or other issues with the site, that we, we are not delayed any further. If the parking is, and the accessways are all resolved.
Yeah, traffic flow, pedestrians, you know, safety.
Yeah.
With trucks and parking, human parking and access points and that kind of thing.
Yeah.
I think seems to be.
Yeah, that's, you know, your operation is, is focusing on, but if, if that ghost plan, if there's opportunity for someone, I'm not sure who would be doing that, but it'd be the owner of the building.
Yeah.
Uh, if that affects the drive lane, you know, ultimately, there could be some thought conceptually into how things are going to lay out, then you, that drive lane exactly where it needs to be for, not only for your operation, but possible other operations that might be coming in.
Yeah. I, I'm hoping that, and I, I do believe, um, that the, the owner's engineer is, is capable of providing us with that kind of sketch of that. We had, we had asked for it a couple of weeks ago. Um, and so hopefully they, they'll be able to provide that. But I do think we'd be able to work out, you know, the comments in my staff report note kind of this configuration and circulation issue. So I think, um, you know, we're, we'll be able to apply that and, and kind of reconfigure that proposed parking and, and then see if that drive aisle has to change or get tweaked. I mean, again, I go back to the good, the good thing on this site is we got lots of room to play with, right?
Mm-hmm.
to make it work. So it's really just about, let's just make it work. Get it to work right.
Do it right the first time, right?
Yeah.
Find it tuning, yeah.
And not have to move it around.
Get the drawing.
Yeah.
Is there any language to the conditional use permit we need to look at tonight? Just so the next meeting, we can just, you know, it's
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good question. I did, I did note on the C P, um, clarification and an exhibit just showing clearly the area that's going to be permitted for food, food production.
Okay.
Um, so I'll, I'll make sure we get that exhibit. Um, so you can see it. If there's other comments on that, I'm happy to make changes.
I think this is a great use of that building and I would love to come see it.
Okay.
My son will be a consumer. He loves mushrooms.
Oh, that's great. Thank you, Marilla.
I did a tour of the Wabashaw caves a few weeks ago.
Oh, you did?
And they used to have a big mushroom operation in there, I understand.
Yeah, I keep hearing the stories. I've never seen pictures of it, but very interesting, yeah.
So there's some local history.
I thought mushrooms had to grow in the dark.
No, there, there's many different types of mushrooms. So not all of them like dark, but the buttons, the ones that you see most common, these aren't those, grow in the dark. But our specialties like a little bit of light, they don't need a lot. Yeah. I'd like to thank very much your, uh, thank you for your time and Stefan, we'll look forward to seeing you at the next time and the rest of you as well.
Yeah. Look forward to seeing the updated site plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there any other comments from the audience? Uh, okay. Very good. Well, then I'll close the public hearing at, uh, what is it? Seven twenty-four. Um, did we answer your questions, Adam, about any changes to the, that we might want to recommend at this point for CUP language?
Uh, I think so. Like the exhibit and then, um, let's see.
Yeah, the, on page fifteen of the PDF.
Yeah.
He's got, um, sample language there. Right?
And I'll clean that one up just to, uh, usually, you guys don't see it, but usually we reference exhibits in our resolutions that we write. So, but I'll show you. I, I'll, I'll make sure we get that exhibit prepared and then
Okay.
we can, because we'll have that extra meeting, I'll be able to show you that. So.
Sounds, yeah, just try to make sure that it's ready to go. So we don't have to spend much time talking about it next time.
Yeah, it's a good point.
Yep.
Okay. Is there any, any other lingering questions that we haven't discussed?
I feel good about the direction. I mean, it would just be up to a motion that you would table this item to the February.
February meeting, whenever that is.
I'll tell you, the February third. Is that right? Yeah. February third, planning commission meeting. Oh, February second.
Third and it's Friday.
Yeah, February second. It's sweet. Yeah. So.
Okay. Any other discussion or we're, I'll entertain a motion otherwise?
Well, so make, make a motion to table the vote on asylum till the next meeting?
Review of the site plan.
I'll second that. Hold on, favor?
Aye.
I opposed.
They did, yeah.
Yeah, we did that. Okay. Then lastly, we should report another business. Um, I said last summer that I would take over the, the reins of the chair, uh, until beginning of the new year, and then we would have, uh, new elections for, uh, for a new crop of, uh, officers here.
I think we were all conveniently forgot that discussion.
Yeah, I know.
That you're doing a good job.
I didn't forget that.
I didn't either.
Um, so, um, as I mentioned, I guess the last meeting, I'm not necessarily, um, excited about the idea of continuing on as chair. Um, I, I guess I wouldn't, um, I guess, but I, I'm not saying absolutely no, but, uh, I'm definitely open to others stepping up and, and taking over the chair if, if so desired and, and nominated. So.
I would like to see you continue for another year.
Mm-hmm.
You have the experience. You've done well. We haven't kicked you out yet.
You almost did. I think at the, the last set of issues we had. Well, I also think that Mike would make a good chair.
Well, I, I have appreciated your leadership very, very much. It's sort of a nice calming sort of thing that happens and, and that's, that's important. Uh, I've appreciated our friendship and, and working through some of the difficult issues. Um, and I would be very, very proud, uh, to have you continue in this role. And we could, we would support you and, and through that process, I think time is a big thing too. And I know that there are things happen, right? Travel or whatever it might be. Then I think, uh, looking at opportunities within us maybe is more the conversation is about, um, who would be the junior partner? In case you decided to take a week off or a month off, which is fully understandable. Um, but that would be my thing. I've, I've really appreciated your leadership.
Well, thank you for the vote of confidence. Um, I, I'm not, wouldn't call leadership necessarily. I'd say it's more just, uh, managing.
Seat of your pants.
Yeah, sort of. But again, I'm open to anyone else. Barb, you've got plenty of experience as well too.
Yeah, but chair, I really like you. But I also understand that, um, you know, you got kind of pushed into this. So if you didn't want it to continue and wanted somebody else to step up to the plate, I totally understand. Um, but yeah, between Mardel, yourself and myself, we are the, the older generation that have been around here. Maybe I shouldn't said generation, but the older, we've been, uh, we've been here a long time.
Longer tenured, yes.
Yeah.
Well, maybe we need some fresh, uh,
Well, and that was my comment last fall was to get some of these newbies
Yeah.
excited about, um, learning and stepping up, being more part of our town. And I didn't think it was fair to ask them to step up on the first or second meeting as a couple of them they were. And I do think Mike would be an excellent one too. For myself, I don't think I want to be vice chair. It's just too nerve wracking for me. I think I did okay, but I, I just would rather be a commissioner. That's my take on it. Just knowing that, I won't be afraid to put my two cents in because I will.
We count on that.
So with my two cents, I'm going to go for it. Okay? So do you feel like you want to continue? Or would you feel like you would like to bow out and be another chairperson like you and I've been for quite a while?
Well, that is my preference, but if no one else wants to step up, I will continue as chair.
Okay, Mike and newbies, what do you think? You guys got to speak. Mardel, would you like to be a chair? Okay. I, I didn't think so, but I, I am not wanting to leave you out of it.
You don't want to be chair? Are you sure?
I'm sure he wants to be chair.
I mean, um,
He's avoiding eye contact.
My right hand man right here.
The nameplate was placed here. I was just sat here. I sat behind my name. So, um, yeah, I mean, it's been nice seeing you operate as chair and I think you've done an excellent job at it. So, um, it's been fun to watch and just kind of absorb, uh, cause obviously I'm new to all this government stuff, even though, you know, I might be employed by a relatively governmental agency. Um, so yeah, it's been nice watching. Um, I would entertain the idea because I think it's a great, you know, experience thing that I can add. Um, it'll be really fun, in my opinion, to kind of lead this group and hopefully come to some great choices. But, um, ultimately, I, I want to do what's best for but, um, ultimately, I, I want to do what's best for planning commission, and, you know, if that puts me in the spotlight, then I'll do it. If it puts me even in the vice chair spotlight while you continue, so that I can kind of get more of the ropes down, so be it as well, so. But, yeah.
Well.
Not to be rude.
No, 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 no.
But flesh, fresh blood might be nice.
Yeah, no, no, I appreciate that.
So I'll nominate Jared to be.
I'm sorry?
So do we have to nominate someone to vote, or?
Yeah, typically, how's this work? Nomination, and then a, is it a, just a voice vote?
Just a voice vote.
It's been a long time. That's why we're asking.
Yeah. It has been.
It has been a long time.
Yeah, just a simple nomination for chair and vice chair and vote, vote.
I nominate Jared for chair, and I'll nominate myself for vice chair.
Any other nominations? I mean, do we have multiple nominations? We vote, do we vote on a nomination and?
You, you can do it however you want.
Is your nomination your vote?
I mean, if, if we're like the House, we might do ten. You just keep doing it until you win. Never change the nomination.
Yeah, we'll have to, there's some concessions.
There, there isn't a formality other than you have to elect a chair and vice chair. That's all.
I would second that nomination for Jared as chair and Adam as vice chair.
Well, let's take a vote then. Uh, all in favor of that, uh, proposal, say aye.
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 Opposed? So.
Pass it over.
Pass it over.
Pass it over.
No, I'm still chair.
Yeah.
I'll wait until next meeting, thanks. I gotta read up.
All right, any other, uh, reports or comments for future? Need a motion for that?
I make a motion to say goodnight until February.
Second, the motion to adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye.